I'm recalling this meeting. Do we really have to do this all over again just because you screwed up? I wanted to get that in the tape.
You being in the film industry, you think this would be a no-brainer.
With me, it is a no-brainer.
Screwing up.
That's what I mean. Calling a regular meeting of the Board of Education to order March 14th, 2018. Please rise for the pledge. Again.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I think it was better than that.
Now, you didn't. Now can we play ball? Okay. The Monroe-Woodbury mission statement. We are committed to academic achievement and success for all students in a safe environment. In partnership with families in our community, our mission is to promote confidence, inspire a passion for learning, and prepare our students to become responsible global citizens. Do I have a motion to approve the revised agenda?
Motion seconded.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, so carry. Questions or comments from interested citizens? We have interested citizens?
We do.
Do we have disinterested students? Martha Lopez. The floor is yours.
Thank you. I would like to know if someone here can tell me what constitutes DASSA filing on a teacher. DASSA filing, do you know what that is? Can you please explain what the DASSA filing is?
Each of the buildings has a DASSA coordinator and somebody makes a report to one of the DASSA coordinators in the building, and they conduct an investigation based upon the allegations.
And what comes of the allegations, like what are the steps? So a parent comes in. I looked at the New York State guidelines, and there's supposed to be a form that parents are supposed to be able to pull off of the website or provide it once they make a complaint. Do you know anything about that in the high school? Like what are the steps in the high school? I believe that some of the administrators from the high school here, maybe they can answer.
The district has a DASSA form, so when there's an allegation that's made, the DASSA coordinator conducts an investigation. The allegation is listed as well as the findings of the investigation. But if you make a complaint and they conduct the investigation, you have the ability to be able to get a copy of that form along with, again, the allegation and the findings of the investigation.
How many times should a parent ask for these filings?
Once.
So once it's complete, the investigation is complete.
Once.
Once, right? Okay. I've had to ask for it three times, three times plus.
Excuse me, you can continue, but this seems to be a back-and-forth. Why don't you contact the superintendent?
I did. I did. And she sent information to someone else who was supposed to get in touch with me that never did, and this is the problem I'm having. My son in class, my son who is a wonderful citizen, and I'm not just saying that because he's my son, okay? He is a wonderful kid. Many people here can attest to that. He's a wonderful kid. In class, my son was called a drug addict in front of the entire class and told that he needed to seek drug counseling. Right? So my son came home demoralized, upset. This is in the beginning of the year. Since then, I have had many run-ins with his teacher, which I can go into detail here with you. She has criticized him, she has demoralized him. And what was the statement? What was the school statement? I'm sorry, the district statement?
The mission statement.
Yeah, the mission statement. What was that statement? It was that we bring up the child, right? We help the child.
Yes.
However, even after repeated attempts at dealing with this teacher who failed to contact me, who failed to reply to me, I've had to contact her three and four times for every question that I've had about my son, she continued to harass my son and to ignore me.
Well, let's see what we can do about that.
Can I just say one thing? I know that you sent me an email and I told you that the person, the Title IX officer, that she would be back on Wednesday, that's today, and she's gotten the information, because that's something that's separate. I think DASSA is different than Title IX, and I also involved Mr. Kravitz.
And you have always been wonderful. I don't want to say, and this is why I said, you told me someone would be getting in touch with me, and they didn't. They didn't. I have had to fight for my son. I have had to fight tooth and nail and contact people, not once, not twice, but repeatedly, which is unacceptable to me. Unacceptable. My son finally was moved out of the class, but afterwards, I was given, again, I kept calling for the DASSA report, wasn't getting it. I had to call today and said, listen, I am going to that Board of Ed meeting, and I need it. Mr. Carney, I need that file. He did not send it to me. I had to call Carol from the House C Guidance Department, who was wonderful and who sent it to me. By the way, Mr. Flanagan, he was the only person that helped me. Throughout this entire thing, he was the only person that whenever I called him, he was the only one that ever called me back. But it seemed like his hands were tied as well. He had to go through the proper channels, and those were the ones that were dragging their feet, not contacting me, not getting back to me. And so I had to ask for this DASSA report three times. And finally, I got it today at 2:00 and right before dismissal without any signatures, without any signatures at all. It stated the 23rd, which I guess is when he originated this DASSA report. However, he said that he would be doing a thorough, Mr. Carney said he would be doing a thorough investigation. Now, I will tell you, my son is friends with many students in that class, and I have contacted every single one of those parents of the kids that he has contact with. Not one of those kids had been interviewed, not one. So to me, this is unacceptable and not the proper steps for DASSA filing. He said that an investigation was done, an investigation was not done.
Right.
So I need to know now what do I do?
You just did it. You shared this information with us. We will now bring it up to our level, and we will follow up with it. I don't have a copy of your report, so if you, I don't know if you have an extra copy. You can give me that.
I'll give mine.
Yeah. Yeah, you can just come over.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Prashy Sha and Robert Goldbach, is that, am I anywhere near the correct pronunciation of your name?
My name's Prashy Sha.
I'm Robert Goldbach. I'm senior class president.
And I'm the student body treasurer.
So we're just going to talk about this student walkout that happened today at 10:00 a.m. So we thought it was our responsibility as students to participate in this walkout in response to the events that happened in Parkland, Florida. We're fortunate enough to have a cooperative initiation as well as members of this board who acknowledged that it was their responsibility to maintain the safety of the students, but also acknowledged that this walkout was going to be happening regardless of this report or not. So we had several meetings with them, and we discussed the logistics of how this walkout was going to take place. And Prashy?
So we've had two to three meetings prior to the walkout today where we talked about all of the reasons why we wanted to have a walkout, the ways we could actually have a walkout and have it be successful, and actually run through this. So what we did is we created a remind group. So we have a student council Twitter where we tweeted out a code. So students who wanted to participate in this walkout would have to take the active effort of joining this remind group. In the remind group, they would be, in the remind group, they got the messages of everything that they needed to do to carry out the walkout in an organized manner and in a safe manner. We did this so that for safety, as the board, that was one of their main concerns, we didn't give the students all of the information prior. We gave them kind of information as the time came, so there would be no outside person that would be able to get a handle on this information. During the walkout, during the 17 minutes, we tried to have a silence. We had students holding up signs of the 17 victims of Parkland, Florida. We also, we wanted to maintain a silence, and we did something where students were given Post-it notes. And on each Post-it note, each student would get to write their own purpose for walking out. The way we advertised it is we wanted to honor the victims of Parkland, Florida, and we wanted to make a statement that we are united and that we are coming together to make this statement. This was a nationwide walkout, and schools from all over the country were participating. And we didn't want people to get caught up in a fight if this was for gun control or for more mental health or whatever their reasons might be. We wanted to come together as one student body, as one unit, and walk out. And we had about a quarter of the school walk out at 10:00 a.m. this morning. And then, I'm not sure how many people were in the high school today, but the staircase was covered in Post-it notes. And if you read them, there was some really, really powerful things that even brought tears to some of our eyes. And we would just really like to thank you for allowing us to do this and listening to our students and giving everybody a voice.
Thank you. How long are those notes going to be there?
I'm assuming till they all fall down.
Can I ask you a question?
Nice.
If students didn't have Twitter, how would they get messages?
So we also put on Instagram and all the other social media.
You did.
Yeah, and we explained to a lot of classes. We were not to really present it in front of the class, because the school couldn't really sponsor it or not. But we did try and make sure everyone is aware of it by talking in the hallways and stuff.
And like within student council, we have all of the student government, so we have representatives from each class. So everyone in each class was aware of it, and they were told to like share it and kind of like talk about it in school and everything. And we also had one meeting with the Safe School Ambassadors, which is a much larger group than just student government, and they were also, we told them our plan, and they were also able to reach out and share to more students.
Thank you.
Thank you for your care and your responsibility.
Thank you.
Any update on questions or comments raised from interested citizens?
No, I haven't had anybody except for Mrs. Lopez. But I don't think that I will share that publicly. I think that's private information.
Correct.
Right?
Yep. Motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of the Board of Education, February 21st, 2018, and the special meeting executive session of March 9th, 2018. Do I have a motion?
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any questions? There being none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carry. The 2018-19 budget review of Book Two and Book Three. Dr. Hassler, Patrick Cahill, Eric Uhl, Karen Jordan, Christine Ricker. So have at it. You have five minutes.
Five twenty, Dan. You have 20 seconds.
20 seconds.
Patrick's book looks awfully big, though. Scary.
He's going to read the whole thing slowly.
The accent. Tonight, Patrick and I will be presenting Book Two, which includes core instructional areas such as language arts, math, science, social studies, as well as district-wide instructional programs such as art and music. And Book Three, which includes the instructional and educational support budgets, central office budgets for the Board of Education, district clerk, superintendent, business office, personnel, and public information, the undistributed district-wide categories such as debt service, BOSI's administrative costs and capital budgets, as well as the PPS budget, the People Personnel Services budget, which includes special education. Patrick and I want to begin by thanking all the principals, directors, coordinators, department chairs, our respective offices for their input guidance in developing portions of the budget that we are presenting this evening. Want to say a few things about state aid and...
Yeah, no, I was just going to mention that, you know, the budget, even at this point, is still a work-in-process, so, you know, there are certain things that are subject to change. We have a few loose ends to tie down. Obviously, the state aid is still a big unknown at this point, although I'm going to talk a little bit about the Assembly's proposal that came out the other day. So that's number one. By the time that, you know, we're sort of finalizing things, I guess it's really not final until you adopt the budget on the, I think, April 19th. The superintendent's going to propose her recommended budget on April 4th, so subject to change. I don't see any radical change at this point, but you'll certainly know what major kind of things we've done in the interim. The other thing I was going to mention is most of these reports that you've gotten, and I think all the reports and most of these tables that we're going to kind of review here are in program sequence. And so I call this the anatomy of a budget code. So a budget code has four sections. The first four positions are called the function code, and that's prescribed by New York State, the Uniform System of Accounts. And then the next three positions are called the object code. And the function code, like a 1, is an administrative function, and a 2 is teaching or instructional function, you know, the first digit in that, in the first position of the function code. The third position, it's a two-position field, if you will, is the location. 09 is district-wide. And then the program code is the last four digits in a budget code. The program code is unique to the school district. And so we're presenting, for the most part, in program code order. There's a few little parts where I'm going to show it in function code sequence, because that's how I think in statewide function codes, but I'm going to point that out when we do that. So if you run reports in different sequences, the results can be a little different, but if you have questions, just let me know, and we'll address that.
Great. One other quick note. Since this meeting is a rescheduled meeting, you received the reports for all of these areas a few weeks back. There have been some changes that we've been working on since then in WINCAP as we continue to develop the budget. However, this presentation reflects the figures in the reports that you received a couple weeks back. So I'll speak about some things that we're working on as we talk about the various areas of Books One and Two, so that way when you receive subsequent copies of the reports, you'll know some of the things that are happening moving forward. So core programs are up first. Core programs basically consist of the instructional areas of language arts, mathematics, science, and social studies. They include things like textbooks, supplies, replacing damaged books, workbooks, manipulatives, publications, fees related to contracts with some of the BOSI's, calculators, replacement of science equipment. It's basically the cost of instructing nearly 7,000 students in the core instructional areas. These lines were the lines that you heard from the building principals when they presented at the last Board of Education meeting. However, I mentioned to you that there were going to be some changes. I'll give an example. The social studies line was going up fairly significantly due to the purchase of Global Nine and 9H textbooks in the upcoming year. In looking at our funds and leftover textbook money, I mentioned to you that we look to try to stay, we try to do our spending right up until the threshold of our state aid for textbooks. We're going to be able to purchase those textbooks this year with remaining textbook money. So that money, that has been since removed from the budget, so basically the social studies budget is flat. However, the increase for science and the increase for mathematics is still inclusive of the textbooks that the principal spoke about last time. However, I'm still very confident between now and when the final budget comes out that we're going to be able to do some additional purchasing of textbooks. So the two increases that you see for mathematics and science are attributed to those remaining textbook purchases that the principal spoke about last time. The next area are district-wide programs, which include health education, art, music, LoT, languages other than English, family and consumer science, technology, gifted and talented. Again, these were areas that were presented at the last Board of Education meeting. The health education budget includes the purchasing of textbooks, CPR workbooks, first aid, and Red Cross memberships. The art line includes the purchase of all the consumable art materials. That increase is attributed to the purchase of a kiln at, I believe, Central Valley for next year. The music line includes the purchase of the various sheet music needed for students, as well as we have a replacement cycle for instruments within the school district. That $4,000 increase was for the purchase of, I believe, cello and tuba. At the last Board of Ed meeting, we also heard from the middle school and the high school that there were some textbook purchases for Spanish VII at the middle school and French IV and V at the high school. Again, I'm fairly confident that we may be able to purchase those under this year's textbook cap. However, we need to wait a little bit to see that we have the remaining funds in order to be able to do so, so we left that in the budget. But again, that number may potentially come down before we release the final budget for next year. Family and consumer science is for the costs associated with our foods program, as well as repairing appliances and sewing machines. Technology is not under the, is not the area of technology that Mr. Vias presented on when he did his budget. This is the instructional technology piece. That increase we spoke about last time was for the robotics classes at the middle school. The gifted and talented program is flat, but that includes the 3 through 8 GNT program at the 25 level and the middle school. The next is the K-12 physical education program. There's a slight drop there, $956. Interscholastic athletics is a new area that we haven't heard from. The building principals each spoke individually about their respective physical education budgets. However, the interscholastic line is the cost associated with interscholastic sports. You may have noticed in your budget manual that you saw the breakdown of each of the individual sports. One of the things that we're in the middle of in our budget development is previously it was like one massive supply and budget line. There was also lines in there for the various fees that were associated with it. But we're breaking down the costs now with regards to each of the different sports, so that way we can track the spending of the equipment and the needs of each of the individual sports. Also, there are a couple of new programs. We have the Unified Sports Program, which is getting its own line moving forward, as well as the Special Olympics piece, which is going to be included in interscholastic athletics. So when you look at the interscholastic athletics portion, when you see the final budget, you'll see each of those areas broken out in their respective, in their respective sections, in their own individual budget lines. That line is going up a bit, due in part to the shifting of some of the funds that were originally in physical education that should have been in interscholastic athletics, as well as the increase of fees that we have to pay to Section 9 and Orange Oster BOSI's with regards to the cost of our athletic teams. Special secondary program. This includes our in-school suspension line, which is at the middle school and the high school, as well as our business education and career education. And again, when Mr. Cassidy presented last time, that $4,000 increase is once again textbooks. Again, we, you know, monitoring our textbook spending for the 1718 school year, we may be able to get some of those purchases done underneath the umbrella of this year's state aid amount. And the increase in student activities was for the MW CARES event that's going to be held next October.
Do you think any of that will be offset by any of the fundraising, or no?
Yeah, and, you know, we still hold true to what we said last time, that that's kind of like money that's earmarked there in terms of the district contribution. However, it's subject to the amount of money that's raised for the program. We may not necessarily need to spend all of the money that's put to the side for the program, depending upon that. The next area is instructional support. That basically is the operating cost of each of the buildings with regards to general supplies, the various budget lines of the building principals. The principal's lines include their dues and publications, their travel allowance, their conferences. At the middle school and the high school, it includes costs associated with graduation and the moving up ceremonies. The general supplies includes the various consumable items within each of the buildings, paper, student desks, the copying equipment, as well as any equipment purchases that they may be making. Conferences and meetings is the various professional development lines for sending staff out to various conferences associated with each of the buildings. There are also a number of different lines that are included in here that the reductions are coming from, which are, which were previously used to pay for our, we have an annual contract with Teachers College for Readers and Writers Workshop. This year, that is going to be under a BOSI's line, which I'll speak about in a later slide. But that money is being moved from instructional support to the BOSI's line, because now having it go through BOSI's, we can get BOSI's aid on that contract. But I'll speak to that later on. The next area is educational support services, which are the costs associated with our academic intervention program, as well as our English as a New Language program, the administrative costs associated with these two programs, as well as the textbooks that we are required to purchase for students that attend parochial schools within the school district. All of those lines are being rolled over and are remaining flat. Instructional management, the district-wide instructional management line itself, the 3,000 line, is the cost associated with administering and the scoring of our Regents exams, as well as the scoring and scanning costs associated with the 3 through 8 testing. We have an increase in that line for a number of different reasons. Number one, the contract goes through BOSI's, and there are increased costs that are associated with that. We also are planning for the possible continuation of increasing number of students actually sitting down and taking the exams. When we did the presentation to you in the fall, we said that we started to see some more kids taking the exam. If that trend continues, we want to make sure that we're prepared in the budget, because we ultimately have to send those tests out to be scored and scanned, so that way we can submit them to the state. The community services line is the cost associated with our enrichment program and after-school swim and the family swim program. That line is remaining flat. And the curriculum development line, that $75,000 increase is the line that I was speaking about earlier, which is going into a BOSI's line, which is in the curriculum development for the Teachers College contract. But now, in putting it there, we are going to be getting BOSI's aid on that contract moving forward.
Want us to keep going? You're on a roll.
Yeah, I mean, if you want me talking about it, I'm happy to do it.
Okay, so moving on to the administrative component here of Book Two. So this is the business office, and this is the one thing I mentioned with the difference between a program code and a function code. As Eric went through that, those were all program codes on the left-hand side. This, for the most part, is a functional code. So 1310 is business office. The 13 represents finance, the finance function. And so you see business office, audit, treasurer, tax collector, they're all, they all begin with a 13. So in any case, the 1310 code, business administration, that's the business office, the accounting office, the payroll office, you know, obviously without the salaries. We're going to cover that next week. But you see here an increase of about $12,700, so that's really two items in the budget. One item is the purchase of Forecast 5 Analytics. It's a piece of analytical software. We actually bought it this year at a prorated rate, and we're going to use that as part of our strategic plan. We use that for long-range financial planning. It's useful for benchmarking. You can, there's a component, a module, for benchmarking, which will help us with a strategic plan. So that's about $10,000 in a BOSI's code. And then the other piece is an increase in the professional development line. It's actually conferences and meetings. It went from 4,500 to 7,400. And so we anticipate, and it's already happened, actually, folks in the business office are part of New York State Association of School Business Officials. They're going to more professional development and conferences, so we bumped that code up. I felt like it's a, it's a good investment in the long run. We're really trying to develop the staff and, you know, push people to do more and stretch themselves. Let's see, so the audit code here, 1320, so that's the external auditor, Nugent-Hausler. That's where that money, those monies are, come from, those appropriations. And also... We expect those results this Friday. We're going to reach out to the Audit Committee and arrange a couple of meetings to review those proposals. So it's a little bit of a chance to leave it flat, but usually when you do an RFP, they're sharpening their pencils and they're going to hopefully come in at, uh, at a good, a good fee here. Treasurer, no change. Tax collector, uh, there's no change there. That's the, uh, the office that's open, uh, approximately two and a half months of the year. So we have a tax collector and two staff people. So that 19,500 is for mailings. There's tax collection software that we use and, you know, miscellaneous office supplies. Uh, 1910 here, this is insurance. So we're seeing a small decrease. That's through New York State, um, school insurance reciprocal nicer. You may be hear us say that. So that's a collective. It's, it's an insurance company, uh, formed by, uh, a couple of hundred school districts in New York State. Seeing a small decrease. It's essentially experience-based, so we're having a better experience in terms of the, uh, the property loss and general liability. I think during Dawn Russell's presentation, we, we had a slight increase in insurance under transportation because we're seeing a, a little bit worse experience there. But those are the two, you know, big areas in the budget where we have insurance. Fiscal agent fees. Uh, so this is, uh, function code 1380. Um, this is going from 10,000 to 20,000, $10,000 increase, 100%. Fiscal agent or fiscal advisor really has two functions for a school district. One is an annual continuing disclosure requirement. So there's, uh, because we have bonds, serial bonds out in the, uh, public marketplace, we annually have to put out a document, uh, that essentially, it's, it's similar to an audit, it just is a snapshot of the financial status of the school district. So that's, that's one piece of those fees. The other, the real need for a fiscal agent is when you issue bonds. And so we anticipate with the capital project needs and, uh, you know, some of the other things going on, we're going to have to soon go to the voters for a referendum to, um, to approve capital projects and issue serial bonds. So, um, that's where those fees would be needed for, for that, going to the marketplace and issuing bonds. Uh, the debt service line is virtually unchanged. And that's all, you know, based on, uh, agreements, you know, debt service agreements. Legal, uh, so this is function code 1420. And legal, the legal code looked at this way. This is actually three budget codes that roll up into this. And it's three budget codes. One is for the board, board legal, which is sort of an umbrella. And, and that includes all the sort of ordinary retainer-type services and, uh, labor negotiations. The other is personnel. There's a, a component, uh, under personnel. And the third is bond council. So those three codes roll up into this line, and you see it's a decrease of $12,000. We decreased the, the board piece of that from 209,000 to 189,000 because we, we're seeing a trend, a downward trend in our legal expenses. You know, we, it had peaked, uh, maybe four years ago. And, and so, um, so we're seeing a downward trend, and that's good news. So we, we lowered that. We lowered it last year as well. What I did do is I increased the bond council. We went from 10,000 to 18,000 because again, in anticipation of a voter referendum and, and potentially issuing bonds, we're going to, we're going to definitely need their assistance with that. Uh, the final piece here, and this is actually a program code, so I'm, I'm really confusing everybody, but in any case, this is Bosse's, and it's, and it's three things really. It's the Bosse's administrative charge, the capital charge, and their rental charge. And Bosse's, I, I think of this as sort of the fixed cost for Bosse's. And they allocate these, these charges, these costs out to, um, all the component districts based on enrollment. It's ARWADA, residential weighted average daily attendance, right? And so, um, so this is, you know, a fairly significant increase, about 7.7%, $86,000. Um, and, and that's essentially attributed to, I believe, the increase in health insurance because as part of their sort of fixed costs, the administrative fee, the, the retirees' health insurance costs are paid in this category. So if the health insurance, which the premiums are going up 7% for next year, you'd expect that this line would not necessarily be seven, but it would, it would increase in, you know, in line with that. So again, that's one of those things, it's sort of out of our control, um, but everybody's going to deal with the health insurance increase for next year. So the category total is a 1.36% increase or about $106,000. Board of Education, so the very important category here.
That's good to say.
So, um, so the first line, again, we're, we're kind of changing this on you, we're going back to a program code. So the function code for Board of Education is 1010, um, in case you're interested. So we're seeing an increase here of about $10,000. And this has to do with a, a re-categorization of the expense associated with board docs, so that's under a Bosse's budget code. And it previously was budgeted under a 1680, sort of a district-wide data, data processing. We felt it made more sense because board docs is used by the board, it's for board meetings, et cetera, to, to actually budget that here. So that's, that's what that increase is attributed to. District clerk, less than a 1% increase. Chief school administrator, a, a flat, flat increase here. And community relations, um, this is, uh, 1,400 program code, 1,480 function code. You see this sort of large decrease. This is when we were, last year, we were getting a lot of services, or all our services in this area, from Capital Region Bosse's. And we've since hired staff to, um, take the place of, of some of those services. We still feel, and we still need, uh, some services from Capital Region, web hosting and some printing, they print some budget materials, et cetera. And we probably will have a need yes, next year with the strategic plan and with the voter referendum for capital work, uh, you know, for some, for some additional services in that category. So overall, it's, it's a fairly big decrease, but it's really explained by the change in the community relations budget area.
Is my raise in there?
It is. It was a $10,000.
Yes.
Everyone, it is.
20% is zero.
You got food today.
20% is zero.
It's zero.
Okay, uh, personnel management, so this is, you know, all the, the codes associated with the Human Resources Department here in the Ed Center. And, um, you know, it's notable here, we see what appears to be a fairly large increase. Again, it, it has to do with the movement of My Learning Plan and Aesop, those charges to a district-wide code. And those are two pieces of software we use for, uh, the substitute, uh, teachers and things. The Aesop and My Learning Plan is used for sort of tracking of, um, professional development. So that's, you know, that really accounts for this big change. Otherwise, it's a fairly, a fairly level budget with, with nothing really significant here. No significant changes. And, um, so tonight, I, I said at the last meeting, we would, we'd have some more details in the property tax cap. This slide is, is just sort of general about the tax cap. It's a, to limit on the annual growth in property taxes levied by local governments, including schools. So there, there are some exclusions or exceptions to that. And, um, you're able to override the tax cap. We, we unfortunately have to have more than 60% of the voters agree to override the tax cap. Local governments just need, I think, 60% of their, their boards, their governing bodies to do that. Really what we talk about with the tax cap is the maximum allowable tax levy. That's sort of the bottom line. And, um, that's, when we're, we're talking about percentage, that's really what we're talking about. So there's a few different factors, adjustment factors. We talked about this, the tax-based growth factor. Talk about that in a minute. The exclusions, the significant exclusion for us is capital expenditures, and that's school districts only. So we're able to add back in, um, the, the net costs associated with our debt service and our bus purchases and any sort of capital work that we would be doing, which is nice. But the bottom line here is the maximum allowable tax levy increase rarely equals 2%. So this was the 2% tax cap that's rarely ever equal to 2%. So here is a worksheet of the maximum allowable levy computation for Monroe Woodbury. So I showed you this last, last meeting, but it was blank essentially. So I won't go through every step, but we start with the prior-year levy here, 116 million, 474. This is where the tax-based growth factor is applied. So it's, it's right off the bat, a 1.7% increase. Now, that's above the county average. If you recall, last year, it was like a, a 3% increase, which is pretty significant. Uh, and it's beneficial for us because it, the, the net effect is to increase the, the maximum allowable levy. Um, and what that means is it, it allows a school district to, to sort of tax and collect, uh, as part of the levy, um, property taxes on any, you know, development and brick-and-mortar changes. So, so that's good. We're, we're experiencing some, some growth in our tax base. Um, I, I won't go through everything. We, we, we backed out last year's exclusions and we add the prior-year pilots. And then we get to this line here, which is the allowable growth factor. So this is the 2% line, and this is, you know, 2% or CPI, whichever is less. So this year, it's 2%. So, so we multiply this factor by this adjusted value. We subtract the upcoming pilots, and pilots are payments in lieu of taxes. So if a property was granted a pilot, they're not paying taxes, they're paying, uh, a pilot, which is like an agreement, it's generally less than the taxes they would have been paying. And the idea of the pilots is to stimulate economic development in a community, obviously. And, um, and then we get our tax levy limit. So we need to, we, we've submitted this to the Controller's Office, and, and based on this limit, we then add the exclusions. So in our case, it's the, uh, debt service here, less state aids. Our debt service is actually more than that, but it's, uh, this value is minus the state aid associated, and that would be building aid. And, uh, this is our bus purchase net of state aid. And so we add these as exclusions to this value, the tax levy limit, and we have our maximum allowable levy, which is 121,529,847 dollars, or about 5.05 million. And that turns out to be a 4.34% increase. So that's pretty significant. Uh, the increase last year was 3.85% and we maxed out, we, we needed to with the increase, the 18% increase on the health insurance. I'm, I'm hopeful that we will not need to, uh, levy the maximum allowable limit this year. Any questions on that one? That one's, uh, okay. Okay, uh, moving on to state aid, just a, a quick update because there's not a lot of details yet. Uh, the Assembly proposal for school aid came out the other day. And what I've done here is I just have some bullets on the Assembly proposal, and I've juxtaposed this with the executive budget proposal from our last meeting. And you recall the last meeting, we had the Regents' proposal, we have the executive budget proposal, we now have the Assembly's proposal, the Senate will come out with their proposal, and there'll be a reconciliation when the state budget is adopted. So the Assembly has proposed a $1.5 billion increase in funding for schools. Uh, you contrast that with the Governor's proposed increase, which was 768 million. So it's, you know, nearly twice that. Um, 1.2 billion of that would go to foundation aid, which is beneficial for us. Uh, it's quite a bit more than the Governor's proposal for foundation aid, which was 337 million. A four-year phase-in of foundation aid formula, the foundation aid formula, so that would be fantastic. I'm, I'm sort of cautiously optimistic about that, but it seems like every year, they propose a phase-in and, and the state, they just can't commit to that. Authorization for school districts to create a TRS reserve. TRS is Teacher Retirement System. So by law, uh, we have an employee retirement reserve, which is all our, our, our non-certified employees, but there is no TRS reserve and the vast majority of our staff are TRS. So it would be very beneficial and logical to have a TRS reserve legally, you know, permitted to have that reserve. So that's part of the Assembly's proposal. The Assembly rejected, and I mentioned this last time, the Governor's, uh, new cap, cap the growth in transportation, building, and Bosse's aid, uh, which is good news, and that's kind of what we expected. And, uh, the Assembly also rejected the proposal to shift more of the costs for summer school special education programs to school districts. Currently, in the summer, we, we, if we have a district, they used to call it summer handicap. I still do sometimes, but that program for eligible expenses, we're, we're aided up to 80%. And we, we account for that through the special aid fund. In the Governor's proposal, it was to lower that 80% ratio to somewhere like around 50%. So it would have been a massive shift from, you know, the state to the local school district for those summer programs. So fortunately, the Assembly's rejected that. It's, it's likely that won't come to pass. So, um, this is good news, you know? Again, more to follow on, on, uh, the final numbers here. So I just wanted to touch on, on, um, some of the aids that are available for, um, we're gonna, we're gonna hear from PPS and our, our special education, uh, special ed budget in just a moment, but I wanted to talk about some of the aids that are available for those expenses. So, um, there's actually a few different aid programs that, I think the primary aid program are one of the ones we don't talk about as much, is in foundation aid, there is a factor that accounts for special aid students, or special ed students, rather. And, uh, you know, that's part of our foundation aid number is based on that. There's the summer, uh, program that I just mentioned, and there's private excess cost aid for private placements. And then there's this, public high-cost excess cost aid. So this is aid that is available to districts when the expense involved with the individual student surpasses a certain threshold, and I'll go through sort of the formula very quickly. But it's, um, public placement, so it's in-district programs, it's Bosse's placements or placements in other, uh, school districts. The formula, I'll just sort of cut to the chase here, is the annual cost for a student minus, this is like a deductible, three times our approved operating expense per pupil, multiplied by an FTE, which is a full-time equivalent, multiplied by a ratio, the excess cost aid ratio. So in our case, um, our latest approved operating expense is about 15,400, multiplied by three, 46,191. So that's the deductible on this aid program. And our aid ratio is about 58, about 59% say. So if we had a student who's, uh, you know, the annual expense associated was about 75,000, which is not unreasonable with tuition, related services and things, the formula would work like this. We would have deductible of 46,000, so it'd be 28,809 eligible for excess cost aid. So we'd multiply that by our ratio, and we'd receive just a little under 17,000 in aid for, for that student, or about 22.6%. The, the way we track this kind of thing is through the New York State Ed Department system to track and account for children. It's a claiming process. It's, uh, we submit individual cost information for pupils. Uh, New York State Ed Department reviews and approves the costs. Payments occur, uh, in subsequent years. Sometimes it could be years later, there's a revision. So it's difficult, uh, program to, to track and account for, for all the aid. The eligible costs would be tuitions, related services, um, for in-district programs, the teacher salaries, paraprofessional salaries and benefits, district, in-district related services and other equipment. So when we talk about special ed, when we talk about some of the services in PPS, there is aid that's specially designed to, uh, help us and support, uh, the local school districts with that. It's categorical aid. The other aid category that I just wanted to really, I won't even go through it, really quickly touch on some of the stuff Dr. Hassler talked about, textbook aid. Um, there's, this category, broad category is called instructional materials aid. And it's essentially an apportionment per pupil, um, dollar value multiplied by enrollment. So for textbook aid, we get $58.25 per pupil. And it's, you spend it in one year and you receive, like, that would be the maximum, you, you're a maximum allotment, so that would be the ceiling. But if you spent less than the ceiling, you would get that amount of money in a subsequent year. So that's what Dr. Hassler was alluding to. It behooves us and, right? And we always try to do that to maximize our instructional materials aid because it's like leaving money on the table if you don't. Um, so there's, there's some aid for software, library materials, and, uh, finally computer hardware. So there is funding, categorical funding available for some of the things we've been talking about tonight. That's all I had. Any questions?
I do.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So in addition to state aid and all what you were just going through... So in addition to state aid and all what you were just going through, how about grants?
Well, we do receive some grants. There's some standard grants, there's title grants, there's also the 611 and 619 IDEA grants, which we apply for and generally receive every year. And those do fund particularly the 611s and 619s. 611 is a much larger piece of that. It's probably a couple million dollars.
A couple million?
I'd have to double-check that, Lorraine. That's a look-up for me. You know, I don't look at that every day. I call it a look-up when there's so many facts and figures, you've just got to look, sum them up sometimes.
So when that comes in, where does that go?
That's accounted for in the special aid fund. And as part of the process, there's a grant application process, and it's approved by the state. And we generally would put salaries, you know, we've tended, we've started to put certain benefits for special ed teachers and other professionals in there. And there could be consultant services that we need, fees, all sorts of things would go in that.
So the number-
That's a good, thank you for bringing it up. That's a good point, that that is another offset for our special-
So the $28,000, now, when you were showing the $28,000, is that the cost after all the aid?
Shall we go back?
Please. $28,809.
This was just an example.
That's fine.
If we had expenses of $75,000, that this is our deductible. It's just a simple way to think of it, as a deductible. And then this would be the aidable expense. And then we take that expense that's eligible for excess cost aid and multiply it by our ratio to come up with our actual aid amount.
So what would that one student actually cost? Actually cost, thank you.
What would be?
It would be the 16 off of the 75?
16 minus 75 minus 16.
Correct, correct.
But then this other grant money without the 611 and the 619, we really don't know the true number of that.
Well, I think the, in this case, usually, the high-cost aid is, it's more applicable. If you think about it this way, if you send a student out of district, right, and so the tuition is, it's easy to measure that, the tuition tends to be high, there's related services and all that sort of thing, rather than an in-district classroom, like, let's say it had five students, and you have one teacher and another TA, say. So those costs would be lower, because it's just the cost of two adults plus their benefits. So this is typically, it's not applicable, like, this threshold you have to hit for every student, they have to cost you more than $46,000 to be eligible for anything. Right. So this tends to be, like, the idea, the high cost, it's supposed to offset the very high-cost students.
Predominantly out-of-district tuition students.
Predominantly out-of-district, correct.
So that's only then about, I'm jumping ahead to the next presentation, but that's roughly then 141 students that's on this?
Correct, yeah.
So we're only looking at, okay.
Right. Right now, the projection for next year is about 2.8 million in public high-cost excess cost aid. And that's a projection, you know, it comes out of that state aid run. It's based, it's funky, actually. It's based on like the higher of two numbers, and they take an average for this projection. Because if I go back to this, you know, the aid that we receive depends on how good of a job we do claiming through the stack system, and that's complicated. It's very complicated. And it can, there can be delays, and so then you get that state aid run, and all those stacks weren't part of that state aid run. So I said it becomes difficult, and it can, actually, to do that.
All right. And you also had mentioned certain services that the students get outside or inside, which could be medical services, like OT, PT, things like that?
Yeah, related services.
Related. Do we bill the insurance?
No.
Why not?
Because for the most part, these types of services would be educationally-related services, not medical, per se. And there is a system, if I may, for Medicaid, which we do bill. So if a student is receiving some sort of medical service, and they're eligible for Medicaid, we do track that, and we do bill through Medicaid for those services.
For those services?
Yep.
Why not, why couldn't it be through private insurance as well? It is a medical, OTs, PTs, speech pathologists, those are medical, correct?
We're outside my scope a little bit, but I think-
They're sitting back there wanting to answer you, but they're coming up though.
They'll answer in the next section.
Okay, fine.
I think a lot of those would be-
Most people aren't eager to come to the table.
Well, because you're talking about the money, I'm thinking, well, you can collect-
Right.
-from those sources, because those are legitimate. But there's certain-
Right.
Okay.
Right, that's the difference. They're not purely medical.
Anything else? We can add to, make sure those questions are answered.
They're gonna-
Yeah. I'm good, yeah.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Should we stay?
Yeah, I'm gonna move to the side.
Yeah, come on over.
So included in, as I mentioned in the beginning, included in the Book III budget is the People Personnel Services budget and the Special Education budget. A few years ago, when we started having the building administrators present their various budgets, we also had the PPS and special ed staff come, please don't shut down, come and do their respective budgets as well, to talk about some of the trends and some of the budget considerations with regards to putting their budget together. So I'd like to welcome Christine Ricker, and Karen Jordan, and Eric Heelau, the directors of Special Education and the director of PPS, to speak about their budgets.
I'm going first. Do I need a microphone or am I good?
Yes, you do.
Okay. We would like to start by thanking the Board of Ed, Superintendent, and Cabinet for giving us the opportunity to present our budget tonight. Before I begin our actual presentation, I just want to clarify a couple of things that were said during Eric and Patrick's presentation. So as far as high-cost aid students, it's not just the 100-something that are out of district. We have several in-district programs, our 12s, our 8-1-1s, that those students, on average, we actually did a cost analysis this year, and some of the kids in our aid are costing us about $60,000 to $65,000 a year, so they do meet that high-cost threshold. Also, when it comes to using grant money to offset those, state aid does not allow you to get state aid on money for, that you're using from federal funds. So we are very intentional when we write our grant to make sure that the staff we are putting in the grant are not the student, they're not the staff that are serving the students that are high-cost aid students. I don't know if that helps clarify anything.
Yeah, it's like you're getting it twice.
But it comes to the district, and it gets figured out. It doesn't sit somewhere else. It comes in-house, and however it gets put, it offsets.
It offsets expenses that would have gone into general.
So I'm just going to go through some basic numbers to begin. We have 6,817 students in our public schools. Out of that, 1,167 students are classified. 1,026 are educated in district, with 141 educated in out-of-district programs. We currently have 82.3 special education teachers, 74 teaching assistants, 62 monitors, and 37 related service providers. Budget considerations and opportunities for the upcoming school year are meeting students' mental health needs, providing professional development, promote more inclusive environment for students with disabilities, continuing our co-teach initiatives at the middle school. We have a grade-two therapeutic support program, which is rolling over from grade-one. We are increasing supports for parents, and we are increasing behavioral supports for our in-district students.
So some of the things that we track is how many students are referred to the Committee on Special Education every single year. So while you may notice that our enrollment as a whole has decreased, these numbers have been pulled from February 23 of 2018. Our current referrals, which is our initials, we are already at 119 referrals. Within those numbers, this year, we had 62 children transfer into Monroe Woodbury, already having an IEP. We also had 10 children who had out-of-district placements that we were not able to accommodate within our school district, and we needed to provide programming outside of the school We also take a look at student classifications, and while none of the classifications really show that there's been any great increases or decreases within the classification rate, we do take a look at since 2011 to 2018, we have steadily been increasing our students with emotional disabilities and requiring greater amounts of support.
With our out-of-district students, as you see, our numbers are staying pretty steady from this year to next year. However, we have accounted for students we have projected to graduate. We do have a good 11 or 12, up to potential of 14 students graduating this year or aging out from the program. Our numbers are pretty steady across the board. Some of our approved privates have had some students graduate. We also had a student who are moving from a higher-cost tuition to a lower-cost tuition placement, still residential, but closer to home, and a program that's more age-appropriate for this child. So we have had not a huge increase overall for the 18, 19 school year.
One of the, I should note, one of the things that we spoke about with the building presentations was about textbooks, and how we're able to make those adjustments along the way. Similarly, when we start putting the budget together, we tend to budget very conservatively when we look at trends in terms of the number of students coming in with IEPs, the number of students requiring out-of-district placements. However, the budget process is a little bit different when you're talking about tuition rates, because the annual reviews potentially may not occur until after the budget has been finalized. So while the budget itself may not necessarily be impacted, expenditures next year may be. So we may not know until the end of May or June if a student is going to potentially graduate that we would not have to pay tuition for. So that student may still have tuition earmarked within the budget, but we may not necessarily have that expenditure following through. So you may not necessarily see any changes in subsequent budget reports in those lines, but the things that Mrs. Ricker spoke about may have an impact on expenditures.
Do we have any programs in the works to try and bring some of these students that are out of district back into the district?
Right now, we're really not developing additional programs next year without, other than the additional 8-1-1 therapeutic program. But the aides that we have right now, Central Valley has two, they're going to have three next year, and there's one down at Smith Close. The students that are in those programs would be in and out of district placement if they didn't exist. So when we go back to the previous slide, this one, as we go through and we look at these numbers and these trends, if we find that we have a cohort of students in, you know, a couple of different out-of-district placements, that we feel that we might be able to develop a program, that's definitely something that's on the table. So right now, there aren't any current programs in the work for the 18, 19 school year, but certainly maintaining the programs that we have. And again, the kids in that program would definitely be in and out of district placement if those programs didn't currently exist in district.
And can I just say something else? I think the other thing that we have to look at before we decide to bring students back is to look at the sustainability of the program.
Right.
The last thing I want to do is bring a child back into the district, to only have them go out of the district again. So I think one of the things that-
For the two kids that we brought back this year, we weren't able-
And I think that we have to be very thoughtful in creating these programs, and knowing that for at least the next three to five years, this program is going to be sustained. So that takes a little bit more thought, and I also think that part of the strategic plan, this work has to be done as well.
I will say, one of the things, before we really continue to delve into bringing kids back, one of the things that we're looking very closely at, similar to what they were saying, is students with a lot of emotional issues and the increase in the emotional, the ED classification. We have quite a few students that are starting in district that are going to out-of-district programs. So we're looking at ways to be able to sort of create certain programs within the school district to prevent some of that population of students from going out of district right now. That is a very, very, very important area for us to focus our attention on.
And many of our out-of-district placements are for students that are emotionally fragile, that have dealt with serious mental illness and mental crises that they're dealing with. So it's something that we take quite seriously, and we bring them back. We really want to make sure we have all the support in place to take care of them.
Some of the students that go out, I noticed, are going to other high schools or middle schools. What do they have that we don't?
It's a very good question. They have a high-
I mean, I could see if we're sending students out to places that are all, you know, with the same disability, that's one thing. But if we're sending to another high school-
Right.
I'm not understanding that part.
Right. One location that we do send students to is Rockland BOSI Suffolk High School. That is a very small public high school. Those programs are for students that are fragile but can get a high school diploma. But they are clinical supports three times a week. They're in small classes. Their largest class size for special ed is a 12-1-1, and they just need a lot of therapeutic support. They have very rich therapeutic supports. It's counselors, social workers, and they get a tremendous amount of support.
And that program, even though it's at Suffolk High School, it's a Rockland BOSI's program. Technically, our contract is with Rockland BOSI. It's housed, it's housed at Suffolk High School.
Okay, same as Nanyouette?
Yes.
Same as Nanyouette.
So we're not sending any kids to other public schools.
They're not just regular, they're not regular-
They're not being sent, no, our contract is not with Suffolk High School, it's with Rockland BOSI. Similar to, OU BOSI's has sites in Cornwall High School, Chester Academy, that, you know, they have a couple of different locations as well.
So why don't we have?
Well, that's what we're looking at with our-
BOSI's to come to us?
Lorraine, that's why we're looking for, in their strategic plan.
I know, but it's-
And the facilities plan.
And the facilities plan, to create situations like that.
And while we would probably have-
Long overdue.
I agree. And while we would probably have the take on the seats, we would still be paying a BOSI's tuition.
Still.
Yes.
Would just be a rental arrangement, where BOSI's would be leasing space.
We may have to worry about transporting.
No. Just the regular-
And we can take on students.
And just to mind- But we would not get the tuition for that.
But if you, I mean, I think to your point, if you're talking about the least restrictive environment, that's sort of a financial piece, but it's also in-house, you know, it's a less restrictive environment in that you're not sending a student to an alternate location. It's still something that's within the school district.
So rather than go through each of the budget codes line by line, I am going to highlight the codes that have large increases or decreases percentage-wise. So if you see our conference and meetings code went from $45,000 to $55,000 with a $10,000 increase, that increase is due to we're utilizing a consulting firm that's supporting us, both our gen ed teachers and our special ed teachers, in helping us integrate students with disabilities so that they can be educated alongside their non-disabled Our HC EQ rental and PPS admin went up $5,765, or 37.6%. That is coffee machine increases that happen year to year. In addition to that, we went from utilizing two machines when we were all at the Harriman Center. We are now in three separate locations, so we each have a machine, so we now have three coffee machines. So those two factors played into the increase in that line. You'll see a $25,000 decrease in HC miscellaneous, went from $180,000 to $155,000. Don't get too excited about that. That money was just transferred to Bargov's line. That's the assistive tech money. We were doing a lot of budget transfers every time we wanted to order tech. And so rather than do budget transfers, which takes time, we just put the money in the MCC's budget, and now, when we need the assistive tech, Bargov will place those The next big one would be the BOSI's tuition line, which went up 14.3%, or $1,55,382. Again, as Karen mentioned, we inherited 10 students new to Monroe Woodbury with IEPs, with out-of-district placements already on those IEPs. We reviewed those IEPs. We recognized pretty early on we would not be able to meet their needs, and we had to maintain those out-of-district placements. So that was 10 placements immediately in BOSI's. And then in addition to that, we are losing some students with- And then in addition to that, we are losing some students with significant mental health needs. That seems to be the population right now that we are struggling with, and that is the reason for that increase.
And the increase in cost of Bosie's...
And regular...
Bosie's costs are going up four percent next year.
Yeah, thank you.
Is that judge, is that anybody, like, are they restricted from increasing by so much Bosie's? Like, how does that work? Because that seems to be the major increase on every budget line you guys are talking.
Yeah, it's Bosie's.
And that's pretty standard, four percent a year.
Really? Are they capped at four percent, or is it...
No, they, you know, they have a cost, right, and revenue structure, and if they run a program and it does better than they thought it would, they give that back as a Bosie's refund to the component districts.
I never heard you say that.
That participated.
I never heard you say that.
But sadly, you're...
I never heard you say that.
They give it back money.
They do, yeah. It's a Bosie's refund.
But they also take our most expensive students, so when there's a small shift in student population number.
Yeah. And when you think about a unit kind of basis, so if there are fewer kids there, the unit cost is going up, right, because they have those fixed costs that I talked about and everything else. So it seems to be like four percent every year, you know? I mean, the last, like, five, six years ago, they were really trying to squeeze things, and it was, it was less, but, you know, we're back where we were.
OCAD, same thing. No, 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 I mean, OCAD is going up three percent, which is program through Bosie's, same line.
So I'm going to jump down to the bottom. Health services, you'll see a one hundred percent increase, but that's really only a thousand dollars to two thousand dollars. And what that is, is costs of equipment. They have a copy machine.
And calibration.
And the calibration of some medical equipment that I could not explain to you.
Blood pressure cuffs.
Okay, that. And then the last increase for health services is supplies, which went from fifteen thousand to twenty-five thousand, and that increase is for their, basically their student information system, which is called SNAP, and it's the web-based student information system that manages health records for all of our kids.
So SNAP doesn't mean supplemental...
No.
Yeah.
Software.
It's software.
Their medical, it's data management.
I know what you're talking about.
You know what I'm talking about, right?
It's for twenty...
Managing the medical science.
It was previously, previously under technology. I think now it's coming under the, it's being budgeted for appropriately under health services.
And it's for twenty user licenses as well as for managing the data in the cloud. And it interfaces with Power School, so we're up to date with all contact information.
And, I'm sorry.
No, and so under professional fees or health services, school physicals, cover new employee, annual bus driver physicals. So why isn't that through private medical insurance? Why is that?
Why are we required to do that?
It's required.
We're required.
It's a requirement.
You're required to do it, but you can't go through insurance yet. If I fall down here, I have to go through my personal insurance first, and then I come after you.
Do you know why?
I thought that's how that works, always.
I think we require employees...
Correct, we have to pay for...
We're obligated.
That's why, but if they pay first, you're paying also for their insurance.
Yeah.
But it also, it's also for...
We're paying full fence.
It's for drug testing, it's for different vaccinations that are required.
The staff, the staff is what you're talking about, the...
I'm sorry, yes.
So maybe we look at negotiating...
I think so.
The healthcare plan to include that, potentially.
I think so. Why not? It's covered.
As long as it's...
Why shouldn't they be able to?
They're just going to raise their premium.
Yeah. It shouldn't. It's part of, it's part of your annual, it's part of what, you know, or bring proof.
You mean making the employees' insurance covered.
First, exactly. So what could it be? A twenty-dollar copay, ten-dollar copay, as opposed to the whole, whatever it is?
Yeah, we are paying...
When they get the physicals, are they already hired, or do you have to get the physical to get hired?
No, you're already hired.
Well, it's both. It's both.
He's a bus driver, he's an annual, it's saying stuff here as annual.
Yeah, I think you should.
Great.
Listen, if it saves a couple of dollars, it's a couple of dollars.
Yeah.
It's going to save some.
Wellness, once annual wellness physical.
That's right. It's, and those are usually free.
I pay no copay on that, and that's through this district's plan.
I just heard Don say that...
Bus drivers cannot use their own physician for their DOT physical, which they're required to have every year.
But they still have insurance.
Can they still put it through their insurance, even if they have to use our doctor?
They can still put it through insurance, no?
The provider who gives the physical also has to be registered with the Department of...
I'm sure there's a database that can find, because why should it be a cost?
So make sure that the guy doing it is in our plan, right?
Why should it be a cost to us?
Look into.
No, that is a good point.
It is.
You bet. Do I never make good points?
I love it. So just to close this up, this gives us a seven hundred ninety-six thousand six hundred eighty-eight dollar increase from budget to budget with a six point one nine percent increase.
Okay.
Any questions?
Oh, yes. I have a whole lot of stuff. I'm sorry, I'm going to keep you here for a few.
Okay.
All right, so I see that there was a jump from, I'm glad that you mentioned about 2011 up to now, there was a jump also from children who have autism, went from sixty-five, I think, to one-eleven. So are you aware or familiar with what Microsoft is doing?
They're making software.
The company, the company. They're hiring those students, those people with disabilities, that's a talent, that's what they consider it. So are we tapping into that, students, those students? Because we sit here and we talk about the students who graduate, and we're prepping them for all sorts of extra credits to get into college so they save their mother's, you know, father's money so that they can get extra credits in there. And here we are with special ed. Are we doing that for those students?
I can tell you...
Who have those talents.
Yeah, I can tell you, we have the, we have the, I don't know, you have your strategic plan update that's coming up, but can I, can I help on that?
Go for it.
We have, what?
It's normal.
Oh, we have, we have an academic, like, you have the strategic plan, and then we have an academic task force. That's met a couple of times. And one of the things that we've been talking about is, and this was at our meeting on Monday, was, you know, the term that's often tossed around is college and career ready. And that's a term that's been coined by the state a lot, and we've been speaking about it in the district, not so much in the use that the state has for it, but how can we equip our kids with skills that are going to serve them well post-graduation? And that's in every possible capacity. You know, certainly, I think we have a very strong, you know, you talk about core programs, we have a strong core program here, but also finding ways to be able to support kids based upon whatever path it is that they plan on taking moving forward. That is a significant focus that is under review right now in the academic task force, is finding ways to be able to, I mean, one of the things we were talking about was pathways towards graduation. Somebody proposed, like, the idea, what?
CEDAS.
Yeah, pathways towards graduation, but also, you know, kids like selecting majors and having offerings where kids not only have the necessary state requirements towards completion, but also getting the fundamental skills of whatever it is that they plan on doing moving forward. We're looking at the Bosie's model for CTEC, which is included in this budget. OCAD at Bosie's includes a whole array of different things. Technology is included in that, kids that go to Bosie's for fashion, cooking, you know, foods and things like that. Ways to be able to increase our capacity within district to be able to offer, because we send, I mean, look, right now, it's one point, one point two million dollars. We send a lot of kids to those programs, and we have a strong, you know, a strong program that currently exists. Kids complete Part A in Monroe Woodbury, and then they go out. Are there ways for us to be able to support that for kids that, you know, in district to possibly offer that? Where Newburgh, Newburgh has a very extensive program over there in terms of their offerings. Now, Newburgh is not part of Bosie's, so they don't have the ability to send their kids there, but that's something that we're definitely looking into about expanding within Monroe Woodbury.
We also have a tremendous amount of kids that are on the spectrum that despite their social or language deficit, they're excelling academically, and they are integrated, sometimes with support, sometimes without. And, I mean, they're doing great, and they are headed to college and to do great things.
But I think we look at all disabilities, not just children with autism.
No, I know, but there's, you know, you think that there's, you know, there are a lot of students that leave here, and I think I asked last year, are we really tracking those students with special needs? Where are they afterwards? Where are they at twenty-one years old if they're here till twenty-one? Where are they and what are they doing? The dropout for special ed, I think, increased from last year in this school by one or two. If you look on the Department of Education, it's there, okay? So it's just, you know, I'm not focusing only on autism. It was just a program that was unbelievable, that there are more things than just pushing shopping carts.
We agree.
Because we send a lot of the students to those stores and those places, and that's not really, you know, there are other things that they can possibly do. And I'm glad that the CEDAS is going to recognize, it's a form, right? I don't know what that is still like December fifteenth, that kind of passed, right?
It's taking a long time for them to get that off the ground. I mean, I feel like I did a presentation three, four years ago on that.
Just the CEDAS is a credential, so that's part of the region's diploma.
But they're going to recognize...
That's right, as a credential.
As a credential, so that they can go on to military or wherever that they feel that they want to go.
With both of those together, not in isolation.
Not in isolation.
Correct.
Okay, so then there was, I saw on here, the Special Olympics, and, you know, we see, I know that athletics is going to come up, but where is there a line for students with special needs that have their own, like, athletics? Since we know that that's not a mandate.
Right.
Neither is music, and neither is art. Where's art therapy? Where's music therapy? Where are those kinds of things and supports that those students can be entitled to?
Previously, I think, was it the miscellaneous expenses line that there was like a little slice of Special Olympics in that line or whatever? And upon further review between the addition of the unified sports program that exists in athletics and the expansion of the, you know, Special Olympics, Special Olympics has blossomed, you know, it started out as a middle school program, it rolled over to the high school, now we have it at the elementary level. Upon having conversations with Lori Hock, we decided that not only when we were breaking out the codes to all of the individual athletic programs, we were going to include the Special Olympics program and the unified sports program under the umbrella of athletics because, you know, the kids are out there and they're competing interscholastically the way that all of the other kids are competing, so they should be able to have the opportunity to be able to do that.
So there's a lot of students that don't participate in Special Olympics also?
Right.
Or they don't participate in basketball?
Right.
So what else is available?
They have the ability to participate in any club?
They do.
Yeah, sure.
They absolutely do.
Yeah.
But we want to be realistic about stuff, because a lot of students don't make it because there's a competing factor. So what happens?
Well, I mean...
I know they have the same right as anybody else, but, you know, we...
But, I mean, and also...
It's very competitive.
Sure, also within, I mean, it's not just, you know, you have, you have tryouts for athletic teams, so on and so forth, but you also have all of the extracurricular activities that are out there that there aren't tryouts for in the various clubs that the kids are welcome to, you know, they can, every student has the ability to be able to participate.
Every student can play PTA basketball, no matter who they are.
No, I know. No, there's no discrimination against that.
I'm saying, so like, I mean, there's only, unless sixteen kids make the basketball team, there's three hundred in PTA basketball.
But if you do have, you know, we'll say twenty-five, thirty students that have maybe some physical disabilities and want to get on the track team, but they can't, why not have a track team for those students so that they can have their...
Well, I do know, we have kids, we have kids with an array of different disabilities, you know, again, it could be physical disabilities, it could be emotional disabilities, that maybe they have a monitor that accompanies them.
And they are on the track.
And they do, they do participate in the track team, and it's incumbent upon the school district to provide the services in order to be able to support the kids on that program, and they do.
And we have, on monitors that run...
That run with the kids on the track.
And I also have students in out-of-district placements that are on our high school track team, they've been on the high school swim team, I have someone trying out for high school lacrosse right now, and they come back from the out-of-district placements and try out and make the team.
We actually had a situation this year, we were talking about students that participate in some public school, high schools in out-of-district placements, where one of them was trying to get a Monroe Woodbury student to participate on their interscholastic athletic team.
Track team.
Yeah, and I wasn't, I wasn't going to call out the sport, but, you know, they were trying to get our student to participate in their program, and we said, no, the student needs to come back to Monroe Woodbury to be able to compete on our athletic team.
And Lorraine, in that very same code, that code covers our consultants, and one of our consultants is Westchester Creative Arts, who provides music and art therapy to students who need it.
In class.
Like OT.
That's part of the curriculum.
Like occupational therapy or physical therapy, when we identify kids that really need that as a therapy, we do offer it.
We do.
So you just mentioned something about, and I had mentioned something before about OT being paid through the medical, right? So me personally, I have a child who I take for OT to teach her better handwriting. So that's getting paid by my private insurance. So why isn't that the same here if they're teaching the same thing? Because it's a medical issue, but it also will address and will make the academics, you know, better.
I think, I think we have to dig, I think we need to dig into that.
I think that has to really be a dig.
I think the whole insurance thing, I think is an area that we're going to, we have to dig into that further, because...
I think there's just so much more that is available.
There, I think as a school district, we're not opposed to finding creative ways to get increased funding. I mean, if there's money out there for us to be had...
But I think it's got to be the way to find, medical versus educational.
PT community is not going to want the insurance to pay the school to take away a job from them, to understand.
What do you mean, the PT community?
I'm a PT guy, and I went to college and became a PT guy. I want your daughter to come to me, and the insurance company, I'm billing the insurance company, insurance company's paying me. The PT community is going to, listen, is going to fight the insurance company, because why should they pay the school?
Because you're hiring the PT here. You hired the PT here.
For educational purposes.
You hired the PT.
It's only for educational purposes, not for medical.
Okay, so you have a student that has, can't really write, has difficulty, okay? May have had a stroke, whatever the story is, and they need, that's medical, but they can't write, so what do you do? What can you first, the chicken or the egg? It doesn't, it's going to support both.
Agreed, I mean, we, I think we can, we can dig into it, yeah.
I'm not disagreeing, I'm just saying that that's where the pushback might be, the two, the two industries, the insurance company may not want to pay the school districts to do things that they're paying outside.
But you're providing a service to students that have...
You're speaking like logic. I'm talking about the way, the way businesses look at outside.
Can I just make a recommendation?
Yeah.
I think that there's a lot of conversation about insurance, and insurance and multiple, multiple ways of us looking into it. Patrick, can I ask you to please look into that?
Tomorrow, get back to us by tomorrow.
So can we, just because, there's a lot of, you know, you have, you have a lot of good questions.
Yeah.
But I think that the only way to find out is why we haven't done this in the past.
Right. And in the end, you don't want it to be, like, the district just hasn't decided enough to do it. If in the end, the insurance companies kick it back and they're not going to cover it, then there's nothing that we can do about it. But in the end, it's not a district decision saying, no, we're just not going to, we're not going to bill, you know, the insurance companies.
So hire a PT as a consultant to work rather than be an employee and then they can bill. So they can accept your insurance.
But before we do that, we should find out what we can and cannot do.
And I don't know, I don't know, my only, you had me, you had me all along, right up until there, I don't know if we would be able to do that and have it meet the student's IP. If a student gets the IP on the IP, I don't know that bringing in the consultant would allow us to meet the needs of the IP.
But I see Patrick is writing and I know that Patrick is going to get me all of this information for autism.
Okay. So my last, my last...
Report, read the report.
Hurrah. Everybody wants to go and we were on a roll. There, yeah. Okay, so there was a program that was last year, a 10-1-1 class, okay, which is not a recognized class, a special ed. How are we billing that? And how do we get funding for that if that was not a special ed class?
It was a special ed class.
It was a special ed program. Class, what we take a look at is individual children within the class, whether or not we can bill for high cost. One child in particular in that classroom was at high cost and we were able to get reimbursement for that one particular child.
If it was a 12-1-1 or a 15-1-1, would there have been any difference in age?
No, we still would have looked at individual children.
It still would have been behind individual.
In fact, if there were two additional kids, because you can go to kids higher, it reduces your likelihood of getting to the high cost threshold.
It reduces the ratio of the staff to the student, so the cost of the per student would go down.
We didn't lose any money on that?
No.
No. I think that's it.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
All right, thanks a lot.
Reports by Board of Education Committees. Chris, do we have a policy?
We don't have any policy that we've discussed since the last time. We have a meeting Friday at 9:00 AM. We're going to start the back to where we were.
All right. Don, we have a facilities coming up.
Yeah, March 22nd, we have a facilities meeting. We've gotten positive indications from the Senate and the Assembly that our bill is proceeding.
All right.
I don't know if Patrick has any more facilities.
Not really.
The Harriman.
Yeah. I mean, the only thing related to facilities, I can talk about it later, is the lease for the Harriman with the Village of Harriman is on the agenda, sort of last minute. It was fully vetted by our attorneys and that's what took a long time, but we got that on and...
Good. Okay, so I think that's really, that's it for committees. We now go to strategic plan and then we go to Sanjay for some reason.
The last time I spoke about the strategic plan, I mentioned that we accomplished two goals. We selected a group to help the district develop a strategic plan and we chose PLC. The other objective was to choose core team members, so we have about 34 core team members who are part of the core team. They come from their parents, administrators, teachers, bus drivers, so it's a very diverse group of people. Since then, we have met again to review the data that we received from our survey and we administered the survey in the following manner. We had what's called family engagement. We received 906 responses. Those are parents in the community. Community engagement, those are people in the district who don't have children but still reside in the district, they're taxpayers. We received about 309 responses. School performance scan, which includes teachers and administrators, there were, it was broken up into sections such as the academics, the school climate, all of those different parts. We had 431 people respond. Support Services Strategic Planning Survey, which is our clerical staff and our support staff, we had 112. And we had what's called Student Voices A, which is all of our elementary students, a thousand, a little over a thousand elementary students responded. And then Student Voices B, which is our middle school and high school, we had over 3,200 students respond. One of the things, and I think I mentioned it the last time, was that students had an opportunity to be able to write anything additional. We had over 275 pages from our students who wrote in what they felt they needed to share with us, so I was very glad to see that they took the time to write things. Interestingly enough, some of them wrote, you know, they wrote things and then they said, you probably aren't going to read it. So I thought that was interesting because we did read it. And as a result of that, we met with the committee and then we broke down what each group focused on. And I'm going to have Bargoff and Matt talk a little bit about what the surveys indicated.
So as Mrs. Artur just mentioned, we started with about 34 people as a core team and it was a combination of different stakeholders of this, on this team. We met twice already and our last meeting, through the help of PLC, we went actually to dive deeper into the data. That's basically the feedback that our students, community, so our support staff administrators gave us. And then basically, from that point on, we decided to break down this into the multiple task forces. And based on the feedback of the core team, we actually ended up doing the four task forces, based on the feedback, that basically those are the curriculum and instruction, communication, student experience, and emotional wellness. The plan basically from this point on, have each task force actually work in their own, in their own environment to do some research of what are the best practices that other districts are doing? And then bring those knowledge back in their, in the task force, but also each task force facilitator will report to the core team member. So we are hoping that in next two to three weeks, we'll have a core team meeting back, that each task force will share these results back to the core team member. And then we will have until at the end of June or July to come up with the best practices and compile as a big strategic plan to present it to superintendent and the board.
So can I just jump in? One of the things that we did not do, we talked about having a facilities group, but because we already have a facilities group, we felt that it was, would be overkill. What we thought maybe is that we would take some people from the core team to be part of the facilities. So that's one of the reasons why you don't see that we have a facilities group.
So, and Elsie spoke about the large number of students who, who not only took the survey but then shared their comments. The high school students, there were a number of takeaways from what the high school students were really seeking or asking for. They want us to review a number of things. They'd like us to review a possible later start time to their school day. They would like to talk about vaping in general, which was addressed at the last Board of Education meeting, so we're already, you know, out in front of that, which is, which is great. They asked us as a committee or group of committees to review their homework policy. They talked about the continuing efforts for students to want to feel connected, particularly to adults. And it didn't matter if they, it wasn't so much, I want to connect with administrators or teachers, they were just seeking adult connection, which, which was interesting.
Can I just jump into that for a minute? Because during our core team members, we also had students there. And it was very impressive to hear students talk about what makes me want to learn in a classroom. And one student shared that, for him, it was the teacher. He felt that if he had made a connection with the teacher, he found himself wanting to go to class, wanting to do the work. And then he compared to another, another teacher where he didn't have that connection. And he said, I do the work, but it's not the same. And so it was really telling for us as a district to have a conversation about what that looks like for students and have students at the table because they were very vocal. The young people that we have as part of our core team are not shy and we've asked them to be very honest and to talk about what their concerns are. And so they did, they did a really nice job politely talking about what, what are their needs as students.
You're right. And then the other subsequent topics were, there were, there were a couple of comments about food in general, you know, can I get some vegetarian options? But there were a large number of students who continuously wrote, they want more mozzarella sticks, which was, was true. They just kept saying, if we could have more mozzarella sticks, we love mozzarella sticks. And out of the 275 pages worth, I would say about, there were probably 50 responses that had to do with mozzarella sticks.
So we spoke to all this.
They liked them.
I guess we have good mozzarella sticks.
We do.
The middle school survey result or the takeaways, students were looking for more and continued opportunities for extra help. They found that a lot of times, teachers offer extra help, but it might be on the same day so they don't have access to every single, every single teacher. There are some students who struggle with the amount of time between periods, getting from point A to point B, and I know Mr. Masano is going to be speaking about that in the near future. A lot of female students talked about the dress code and they said, I tried to go to the store and buy something appropriate for, that's, you know, that meets the dress code, but I can't even go, you know, what store do I go to to buy something? And that was, that was, there were a number of...
The uniform.
Yep.
So we'll put that in the next budget.
That should be changed, for sure.
And again, also, the middle school students asking to be listened to, that was another one. The family survey results.
This was interesting.
Most of the families or the parents who were surveyed, they wanted an increase in communication with staff before, during, and then after problems may occur. They didn't want to just hear about something that happened with their child after it was too late or after a grade, after a poor grade came home. They want to know if there was something going on prior to that, those grades being given, they would have wanted to hear beforehand. And then from the community, it was two things in large part, taxes and field conditions. Those were, those were the two things that they really focused in on. In that 309 group, you know, the people who don't have students here currently, but those are the two that they, they focused on.
They're very concerned about the taxes and the increase in taxes. And they too also talked about communication. They, they want, even though they're not, they don't have students that are attending our schools, they want some way for us to reach out to them. And that's something that the communications task force is working on, how do we communicate? Obviously emails would really help us, so we're working, you know, we're trying very hard to make sure that we keep them in the loop, even if it's inviting them, letting them know about our school plays, like we have a play coming up this weekend. It would be nice if we shared that with them, you know.
Do we get any feedback as to how many people are able now with the new website to view something like the community page or to be able to see about the play and stuff like that? Like, do they get feedback about that?
That wasn't one of the questions, but it's certainly something that once we get this group, this, the community group, is we can reach out to them and ask them, you know, get them, get now specific feedback from them about what, how do they find the website, you know, is it helpful? I, I think they, they still like the mailings.
They like, if I can add that, so this is the group actually, they like the physical copy.
They do.
So we are looking at the part of communication task force, how to reach out directly via mailing.
Right.
We actually had some folks request specifically paper survey and also in the different language. So this could be a group that not connected somehow and we may have to reach out them via newsletters.
But they, but they do like, they like paper.
Right.
Is there a way, we have our vote coming up. Is there a way when these people come in to survey them and say, hey, can you put your email down if you want to be on a community? Give us your email here and then he, there is just a community block. So you wanted to send out what you sent out today about the walkout, you sent it to all the parents. Probably the people that don't have any children still don't know, they just watch what they see on Channel 12. So maybe you could, maybe there could have been the same.
You're right.
Email sent to those people that want to sign up for it, you know. If they put their email down when they vote, then you create a database and then certain things go just to that community, like the Frankenstein thing is coming up, hey, it's a separate email to those people.
No, you're, I think that we, we do do surveys during budget, on budget day, and I think that we can add that piece, asking them, if you, you don't have children residing in the district, would you be willing to give us your email? Many of them have, but, but they're, they're a group that we're not connected to. We certainly got that feedback from the survey and it's really important for us to, they're, they're taxpayers and we, we should be connecting with them. So it is something that we're going to work on, but, but that's a good idea.
But they have to put this wheels in motion. We can't go out and try to find everybody. I mean, we have addresses, yes, but they want other information. They have to come to our website and log on and look into it, but if, when they, I mean, we don't get that data to great turnout for voting, but the, the people that maybe care about voting, care about what's going on, they'll give you the information.
Right, and they should know, they're voting on our budget.
We have the address of everyone who votes.
We do.
Yeah.
The hard part is disaggregating that data so that you separate them for, as people who don't have children. That becomes a harder group to, to extract that, but we're working on that.
Good.
You can always put something in photo news. Say, you know, with, on a certain day, please come if you want to be, receive some newsletter or some other way, because extracting that, like you said, is going to be...
How many, how many mailings did we have this, when we did the survey, how many?
I think we initially did the taxpayer 16,000 mailings.
16,000 mailings, yeah.
So if someone's, pretty much everyone gets the Gazette or the photo news, maybe we could put a blog in there or something in there.
Maybe we can save money by some of us opting out of the mailings. I like it online, I don't need it coming to my house anymore.
That's true too. You can do that.
Opt like a box.
Actually, what, you were going to say something, Barg?
Essentially by the, by the bulk, so we don't, we don't decide that it's usually the post office, like, give us the 15, 16,000 and they decide it. It's not that we have a database that you can opt out.
Got it.
But these are good suggestions, we'll look into.
Yeah, that's...
Report by student representative of the Board of Education, Anjanesh Shashakumar.
It falls asleep.
I don't have much to show you on this. There's some...
Get Mike, Mike.
Sorry.
Yeah, I, it's okay, I don't need to show it immediately. Okay. Sorry, it's okay, I can do it. I should be able to split there. All right. She's tired. Okay. Excuse me. I don't have much, but I'm just going to go through some things that have been going around these past few weeks. Again, this is something that you've heard me say so many times, but I feel the need to say it again. Thank you for the district's support in theater, performing arts, creative endeavors outside the classroom. Congratulations to the cast of Suzie Klow Jr. at North Main in Oklahoma at the middle school. The last time you will ever hear me encourage you to come to a show will be this weekend. The high school students will be performing Mel Brooks' Frankenstein, Friday night, Saturday afternoon, and Saturday night. As I have said in the past, I focus on this aspect of our school specifically because no matter what student I talk to, they always say that they enjoy arts, theater, music, aspects of our schools that aren't traditional but still just as valuable. A, just a side note, at the high school, thank you to Mr. Vias and Mr. Casti, who is somewhere over there. We, as we are moving through, especially in this 21st century, there are clashes with technology and how it's being incorporated into our classrooms, so they very kindly brought us a printing lab. A lot of students at the high school are coming into conflict where, when, with, they don't have printers at home because printers aren't necessary, but then their teachers are requiring them to hand in hard copies of their assignments, but then they couldn't get to a printer during the day and they were getting zeros on their assignments. So while we shift towards tracking printing, reducing paper, having everything more digitalized, this is a compromise that we came to and I'm just very grateful, as many of the students are grateful as they're using it every single day, to have this kind of incorporation as, to adapt to as we change, which is, I think, important. Like through a transition, we adapt and we, we take into the consideration until we get to our goal where we're completely digitized, no paper necessary, what we have to do until we get there. Connecting back, I'm sorry, that was like a random thought. Mr. Masano very kindly allowed me to poke around the middle school last week, that was much appreciated. And I sat in on some club meetings and activities outside the classroom. I picked their brains about what their thoughts are on the district. And for the second, not necessarily as a learning institution, though I very much understand that that is the main priority, but as an establishment that can provide them with a sense of community, from sitting at the back of their play practice and the massive middle school Future Business Leaders of America Club that was established this year, and the Odyssey of the Mind Teams, who, congratulations to them. The two middle school teams both placed first and will be going to state next month. These students talked about solidarity that they felt within their variations of a team, something obviously reflected within all the wonderful athletes within our district. And they talked about how in these sub-communities, excuse me, they learned about themselves and the skills, they need to be self-sufficient in the most important ways, and the autonomy that they get from their own involvement in these organizations. And this is beyond the basic skills that being involved in any extracurricular activity could teach, problem solving, collaboration, unity. It teaches them a lot about being themselves and being who they are, which is, again, a little bit untraditional, but still incredibly valued. Okay. I'm so sorry, I'm a little bit out of it today. This last thing that I wanted to talk about was the student walkout that happened at the high school this morning. We estimate that there were over 500 students who walked out. And they are, again, very grateful for all the collaboration and support that was provided to them during this time. It was very difficult for many students to get through, just emotionally with all the situations that are surrounding it, so that was very much appreciated. I would also like to take a moment, take a moment to talk about how, when this first became something that we wanted to discuss, a lot of teachers, not teachers, I'm sorry, a lot of students did approach teachers administration, bringing forward the discussion, wanting to talk about participating in it, not at first outrightly declaring that they will. It was opening the conversation and I think that that's something that they should be commended for, but then also on the board and on the administrations and for rising up to that occasion, being willing to communicate about it, is also something that was very much appreciated. For the students that did, they did, the students that walked out, walked out for many reasons. But I think the bottom line across every single student in the building, even if they didn't walk out, was the understanding of the memoriam that we created for those 14 students and three faculty members who did pass away during the very unfortunate events and three faculty members who did pass away during the very unfortunate events in Parkland, Florida. And though there were some exceptions throughout the building, especially after the walkout, there was a maintained respect between the students who did walk out, the students who didn't walk out, the students who really weren't really involved in the situation. And it came down to, though we understand and though we have different views on this, we know that we have to have the conversation to make it better. Because the reality is that this isn't the perfect situation that we can be in. And in the future, we can be the students who make that difference. So again, it was very much appreciated, all the support and that was given by the district to make sure that this was safe, because students did feel safe during this walkout. I just have one thing to show you. Prashy and Robert, who were speaking earlier, talked about the posted notes. So I just have, in all the different colors, in the glass case, in the high school are these posted notes. And I hope they're there for at least a little while, but I myself read them and began to cry. Because in so many simple words and in so many complicated words, people expressed why this is so, so important to them. And for just a minute, you see student activism at its finest. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you.
I need a motion to approve the recommended date for the annual vote and election of board members, May fifteenth, two thousand eighteen.
Motion, second.
Been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Motion to appoint the chairperson and alternate of the annual school district election, May eighteen, uh, May, excuse me, fifteenth, two thousand eighteen.
Motion, second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Motion to approve the legal notice of budget hearing and vote. Do I have a motion?
Motion, second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Motion to approve the two thousand eighteen, nineteen Orange Ulster BOSI's nominees, the board members whose terms expire this year are running again, Michael Bello and Eugenia Pavak.
Motion, second.
It's been moved and seconded. All, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Personnel, Matt.
There isn't a lot in personnel, but I do want to just draw attention to the fact that we have eight people on this week's agenda for, who have submitted their letters of retirement. The eight retirees or soon-to-be retirees have a combined total of one hundred seventy-six, one hundred seventy-six years of service in this district, which is a lot. So a big thank you to all of them. And with that, I respectfully request approval for the items under personnel.
Do I have a motion?
Motion, second.
Second. Moved and seconded. Any questions, comments? There being none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Business and financial, Patrick?
Yes, Dan, just a couple of items here. Two groupings of obsolete items, books and media cards from Sapphire and miscellaneous technology items from MCC. And there's also a contract, I mentioned earlier, for the pieces of the Hareman Center to the Village of Hareman. Respectfully ask for the approval of those items.
Do I have a motion?
Motion, second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions for Patrick? The monthly, it's a very odd number. What is that tied to?
It's nine dollars. It's in, whenever it leased commercially, it's annual. So it's nine dollars annually for nine thousand three hundred and five.
Okay.
It's only for a year? That's all, they're, they're only took it for a year? Usually commercial is a little bit more, the terms are a little longer.
Well, typically it is, but I, I mentioned this earlier, we were really not in a position to go to the marketplace and even decide what we're going to do with this long term. So the village needed some space. It puts somebody in this space, so, you know, helps us financially. We're going to make a little bit of money. We're going to have tenants there. We can watch the building and take, they're going to take care of the buildings, snow removal, mow the, the grass outside, et cetera. And it's, it's municipal cooperation, too.
And that's something that we're going to have to look into. The building is in at least two different zones. So that has to be, that has to be straightened out.
It's mostly residential zone. So, I mean, this is, I've had several conversations with Steve Welly about it. So it's, that's going to be huge. And I don't think it's an easy lift, like particularly if there was some sort of processing or, you know, like a warehouse or trucks and things. I, I don't know if that would be permissible in that area. So that's, that's huge. So this, this is sort of a short-term thing.
All those in favor?
So wait, I wanted, I missed that. This was about the, the lease, the renting out of the-
The zoning. We were talking about the zoning being somewhat restrictive and that depending on, you know, what we do with that, we're going to have to take that into consideration and, and sort of vet that issue before, you know-
We can do anything with the building.
We can do anything, or we do certain things with it, or can't do certain things with it.
Or sell it.
Right.
Or sell it, yeah.
But we can lease it.
Yeah.
We can lease it.
I'm sorry?
We can lease it.
Well, it's being leased right now, just for how, what, a year?
For nine months to a year.
Yep.
With the ability to renew. So it's dependent on the village, how quickly they build or sell it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. The, uh, motion to approve the various committees on special education and preschool, special education seventeen point one, point two, point three, and point four. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any comments, thoughts? There being none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Reports by board and central office, Michael.
Just thank you to all the presenters. Very thorough job. Really appreciate you.
Same thing. Thank you to presenters. Have a good night and hopefully the snow stops.
Oh, no.
Thanks to the presenters. I don't have anything else, no.
Suzanne?
I'd like to thank all the presenters and the math picture me demands that I say happy Pi Day.
Oh, that's right.
Sanjana?
I just hope everybody has a good night.
Leah? Barghav?
Last week I attended at the Sapphire Parents Steps. Mrs. Prag did a good job of educating the incoming kindergarten parents. And it was interesting to see there are some, the folks who actually had a second, third child as well. So, good job, Mrs. Prag.
Eric?
Just thanks again to everybody that collaborated on the development of books two and three on the budget. Congrats to the retirees and those appointed this evening. Congratulations to the Odyssey of the Mind teams that competed last week. And I was there. In particular, to Mrs. Hutter and Mrs. McInerney's teams who are advancing to Binghamton, as Sanjana had mentioned. And finally, congratulations on all the students performing the draft production. And I look forward to Young Frankenstein this weekend.
Patrick?
Just thank you to my colleagues for the budget work they've been doing, the presentations.
Matt?
I just want to say, congrats to the retirees. Have a wonderful night.
Lorraine?
Ditto. Thank you for both the presenters. Have a good night.
Thank you to all the presenters and congratulations to all the Special Olympics participants and to the hosting of the parades. They were great to see. Have a good night.
Anthony?
Thanks for the thorough presentations and have a good evening.
Dan?
Great time at Oklahoma. Looking forward to Young Frankenstein. That's it.
Elsie?
This past weekend, I attended the PTA legislative breakfast and Assemblyman Scoopis was there, the commissioner was there, and so was Regent Johnson. One of the questions that was asked was about the tax cap. And the legislators were emphatic in saying, "That is not going away. That is something the governor is not going to give up." In fact, they're getting a lot of responses back from the community saying, "This is a good thing." So if anybody thinks that the two, the tax cap is going away, it is not. And that is here to stay, most likely. In addition, they talked about ways to fund safer schools. So they talked about possibly having a resource officer. If a school chose to have a resource officer, that that money that we spent on the resource officer would be, not be counted under the tax cap. So those are some of the things that they talked about. I want to thank the presenters. And lastly, I look forward to seeing some of you watching the play The Young Frankenstein. I'm excited about it. Too bad my grandson isn't around. He would have enjoyed it.
One o'clock on that-
One o'clock. I thought it was-
Not two. One o'clock on Saturday afternoon. I went to Sapphire Parents Steps. That was wonderful as usual. Also, the award ceremony for The Odyssey of the Mind up there. So many people, so much excitement up there at BOSI's. In the past several weeks, I want to tip my hat to Peter and Andre and all of the maintenance people who had to deal with this weather and maybe, knock on wood, not have to do it-
No.
-next week. But thank you very much for all of your efforts on that. It's, it's tough. The next board meeting is next Wednesday, the twenty-first, at the high school, because there will be a number of awards that we will be giving. And the board humbly asks all of us to provide us with mozzarella sticks so that we can figure out why there's this, seems to be this huge desire.
From mozzarella.
However they're served, I'm unaware. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting is closed.